...into the committee of the whole closed meeting to consider the following item. Item A, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before the administration of tribunals affecting the municipality or local board and advice as subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, O M B settlement, Highway 15. Please vote. And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We just meeting as committee of the whole closed meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. That counsel rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. Still two people yet to vote. There we go, and that carries. Next, I'll ask for an approval of the addits. We have a couple of additions to the planning committee report, and also a new motion, which is a motion of reconsideration, and then a couple of bylaws. Can I get a mover for the addits? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we have one presentation this evening. Kelly Heineman, Vice President of Brigantine Incorporated, will present counsel with the City of Kingston flag flown on the St. Lawrence II Tall Ship when it sailed from Kingston to Charlottetown P E I to represent Kingston at the 150th anniversary of the 1864 Charlottetown Conference held August 2014. Mr. Heineman.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much, your worship, and thank you very much, counsel, for having us here tonight. As a past counselor myself, mayor and warden, I know how nice it is to have a positive delegation here. I'd like to first introduce Henry Kopestake. He's just going to give you a little background on Brigantine and the St. Lawrence II Tall Ship.
Thank you very much, Kelly, and thank you, your worship and counselors and members of council. We're here today really to remind you or reacquaint you perhaps with Kingston's sailing ambassador, the St. Lawrence II. Was designed here in Kingston by the naval, local naval architect Francis McLaughlin in 1952. It was built here at the Davis Dry Rock, which continues in operation in 1953. St. Lawrence II has been offering sail training to Kingston's youth continually for 60 years. So we're sometimes saying that we're the longest continuously operating sail training operation in the world, certainly in North America we are. Many of these sailors continue to work in the Kingston's marine industries, in the ferries, the local tour boats, the metalcraft marine, and indeed in the city's own marinas, reflecting our city's continuing marine heritage that we like to keep going with. We're joined here today by our captain, Captain Chris Chaff, and some of the crew that actually went down to Charlottetown with it. We've got the bosun Ry Stefan, Katrina Haber, and Fraser McCauley, watch officers, and hiding over there is a first mate Liam Barclay. So, and we're quite proud of their work and the work they do reflecting the sailing traditions and the marine traditions of Kingston itself. So as you may have read in your agenda, last year the ship sailed down to Charlottetown in celebration of the Charlottetown Conference and continually flew the Kingston flag. And so we're here to present the council and the city with the flag that was actually flown by the St. Lawrence II, really in gratitude for the continuing support that we've had over the past 62 years, and indeed for the hope that we'll continue to get that kind of support. We're a volunteer organization that runs this thing and are always desperate and always welcome more help. So reflecting perhaps the way Sir John A. went down to Charlottetown, at least in part, 150 years ago from Kingston, here we are. So I'll just pass on for Kelly to present the plaque to the mayor, too.
Thank you very much, Henry. Mr. Mayor, this flag is presented to the City of Kingston Council on April 7, 2015, was flown by the sail training vessel St. Lawrence II Port of Kingston during her voyage from Kingston to Charlottetown P E I to mark the 150 anniversary of the Charlottetown Conference and to take part in the P E I 150 year celebration. The Board of Directors and the youth crew of the St. Lawrence II present this flag as a symbol of gratitude to the City of Kingston for its ongoing support of Brigantine Incorporated. As a living reflection of Kingston's vivid marine heritage, the Tall Ship of St. Lawrence II is a multifaceted community enrichment tool that encapsulates the company's, sorry, the communities dedicated to exceptional programming opportunities for young people, preservation of local heritage, and philanthropy. The St. Lawrence II has given tens of thousands of local youth from all walks of life an opportunity for a life-changing Tall Ship adventure. This award-winning program is as exciting and fun as it is powerful and rewarding. Through sail training, young people build the foundation of life skills they will need to become successful, productive citizens. The St. Lawrence II is the ship that Kingston built. She is a dream turned into reality for her designer and first captain, a young Kingstonian naval architect named Francis McLaughlin. It was through the willpower and dedication of local volunteers, donations, support from local businesses, and the support of the City of Kingston that this young man's dream became a legacy. The St. Lawrence II represents the volunteerism, creativity, and dedication which makes the City of Kingston such a remarkable place to live. Thank you very much. Chris, Chris, Captain, just before you go, if there's any questions, please direct them to the captain, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have no delegations tonight. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, do have a motion of condolence, I believe just the one, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the condolences of city council be extended to the family and friends of James Jim Peters, who passed away March 22, 2015. Jim was active in the local fastball and theater communities. He will be missed. We will call the question. Please vote. And that carries. We have three deferred motions that we will deal with right off the bat, so this is from our last meeting. Number one, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that a bylaw be presented to council to amend by law 2010-1 as amended, the council procedural bylaw, by inserting the following wording to section 14-10, "Any time spent asking questions of staff does not count against the member's five-minute time allowance for making a speech about the motion or issue." And further amended by inserting the following wording, "Any member of council shall be recognized by the chair and allowed to propose an amendment to the motion on the floor regardless of whether he or she has already spoken to the main motion." Counselor Neal.
Yes, this has come forward because this is a common practice in most other rules of order, and a lot of other communities follow this practice, and it really comes from the sometimes frustration that I and other counselors have had when you've spoken for five minutes to an issue, and the debate continues, and later, within that debate, you suddenly, the light bulb goes on over your head, and you think, ooh, I think, I think I know an amendment that can fix this problem. And, but the rules of order are quite strict. The chair doesn't recognize you in presenting an amendment, and all that this would allow us to do is follow a common practice. It wouldn't tremendously, if at all, expand the timeframe allowed for people to speak to a motion. All that it's attempting to do is to allow somebody, one of our colleagues who may have one of those rare eureka moments where you think, oh, I know how this could be fixed, this issue could be addressed with this amendment, and it's just an opportunity to do that. And clearly, it shouldn't be used in a way that allows to extend to the point that there's some kind of a filibuster going on, because that isn't the intent of the motion, and I don't think it would be abused particularly by the members of this council. So I'm hopeful that this can pass and allow us that greater input. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Deputy Mayor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, could I actually propose an amendment to this, that we actually separate these two and treat them individually?
So, yes, so you can ask that they're separated. That doesn't require an amendment, but when we come to vote, then you can, we'll call two different votes, one on the first paragraph and one on the second.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, do you have any other comments, Deputy Mayor Bohm?
Yes, your worship, just basically on the first one here, when they're separated, which would be with the five-minute time allowance for making a speech, I just, in my opinion on this, if you've done, I mean, we do get a lot of this stuff beforehand, actually, everything beforehand, and if you've done your research, you, there's nothing preventing somebody from asking staff for information beforehand. So on something like this, I'm just concerned because we've already had meetings that have gone well past the limit, so if the five minutes is the allotted time, and you could basically ask staff a question, and if it's a four or five-minute answer, and then come back and ask them another question, this could end up being a 25-minute amendment, even though it really doesn't seem like that, because within your five minutes, you could just keep asking a 10-second question, and it could just go on and on and on. So that's my one concern with it, and likely why I won't be supporting that particular part of it. The other part of it, the second, second part of it, I do think kind of makes sense because I think we've all had those, you know, epiphanies where you're in the middle of something, and you go, aha, I think I could propose this, but I've already used my sort of coin for the night, so, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. Just for some clarity in the first resolve clause, if you want to call it that, I believe as a, as a practice, have you not, as the mayor, always been deducting or stopping your stopwatch when a question is asked of staff? And so this is just kind of cleaning up what we've already been doing as a practice and making it a policy?
Yes.
So I'm right in thinking that. The second one, though, I don't mind the concept behind it, but I would like to propose an amendment, and I do apologize to the clerk for not getting this to you because I, it just dawned on me here, that any member, I would like it to read that, that any member of council shall be recognized by the chair and allowed one minute to propose an amendment to a motion on the floor regardless of whether she or he has already spoken to the main motion. I think that's where you can get into continued and very lengthy debate if they're allowed five minutes, and then there's a continuing five minutes and such. I was even considering that if the, if the amendment went on the floor, if this was supported and the amendment went on the floor, whether there shouldn't also be a restriction to the amount of time to that amendment, but I think there has to be some kind of constraint on the amount of time that a person who's already spoke for five minutes has taken, and then if they want to propose an amendment, I think you should be able to make it pretty cut and dry. So I would think that a minute should be more than enough.
So Counselor George, are you, are you proposing?
I'm going to propose that, following the word allowed, that insert one minute to propose an amendment to the motion on the floor.
Okay, so, given the simplicity of that, I won't ask for that in writing. I think we all have that. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Rosanik. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment only, to the amendment only? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I had similar thoughts to Counselor George about the actual putting into action of this, of this motion, the original motion, this clause two here. The one minute is an option to consider. Another option to consider would be that you would be allowed to propose an amendment even if you've already spoken unless you've already used up your full five minutes, encouraging people to save a little bit of time at the end of their five minutes in case they might have an amendment later, because I really don't think this motion should in any way be used to extend the length of time that we already spend on each issue. So if the one-minute rule as a set allotment is the best way to do that, I will support it. Otherwise, I would propose an amendment to Counselor George's amendment to specify that, what I said about the, unless you've already spoken the full five minutes.
So are you proposing an amendment to the amendment, Counselor Stroud?
Yes.
Okay, that I'm going to ask for in writing, okay? Okay, so the clerk has graciously pointed out for me that that is not actually an amendment to the amendment, that is a different amendment to the main motion. So we need to deal with this amendment. We will take the vote on the amendment, and then we will, at that point, since you have not used up your five minutes to speak to the main motion, when amended, if you wish to put forward amendment, at that point, you can do that. Okay, Counselor Neal.
Yes, I looked to my seconder when Counselor George was presenting this amendment, and he was nodding as well, so I think if we were still allowed to do friendly amendments, this would probably be a friendly amendment. The only thing that I would be concerned about is that typically, the mover of a motion, if, if there is considerable debate for that amendment, usually has an opportunity, and I think a minute to present the amendment makes perfect sense. There may be an occasion when you want a minute at the end after everybody has taken their five minutes to debate the amendment to be able to put a summary at the end. But I appreciate that the, the intent of, of the mover to at least give a vehicle by which a counselor can move an amendment even though they've already spoken to, to the motion. So I'm looking to the mover of the amendment, whether his intent was to allow that minute at, to present the amendment, and if needed, to be able to speak to the, to the debate that maybe took place with people having five minutes to discuss the amendment and the mover only having one minute?
So it's really not a relevant question what the intent is, because when you're amending your procedural bylaw, it is what it is. So that's the problem where I think it's unwise to go down that route. We just have to debate with that one minute in there, what does that mean to us?
I, I would move an amendment to the amendment then, so that it would read a minute to present, and if needed, a minute to summarize the intent of the amendment. So the mover has an opportunity, as we always have in every amendment and every motion, to frame it, and...
So I'm going to give you the same answer that I gave to Counselor Stroud. That is not an amendment to the amendment, that is amendment to the motion itself, because you're going to be adding additional words to the clause that we're dealing with. So you're welcome to put that forward at that time.
Fair enough, thank you.
We can only rule with, so this is only speaking to one minute. So if you think it should be two minutes or three minutes, then you should, you should speak to this, but there's not really a whole lot of other leeway to speaking to this particular amendment. So given that, is there anybody else that wants to speak to this amendment? Counselor Hutchison.
I'm not sure about this. I'm looking for guidance from the chair, okay? I'm not sure what this means in the end, so I don't know what I'm voting for, because it says any member of council shall be recognized by the chair and allowed one minute. It's really an additional minute, I presume, to propose an amendment to a motion on the floor regardless whether it had already spoken to the main motion. Okay, so I sort of get where we're going here. You have your five minutes if you need it on the main motion, but say somebody amends it, so then you've got another five minutes on the amendment presumably, correct? I see the clerk going nodding here, and, okay, that's fine, and then your epiphany takes place, and you get another minute to amend what? The amendment or the main motion? And there's further, I see further complications here, and I'm beginning to wonder about them, okay? For example, this just says allowed to propose an amendment to the motion, well, okay, so you, I'm asking you, the chair, the mayor, is to say, okay, this is the way I see this working, because I can see you would actually lose time here.
So if, if the...
If you've been talking to an amendment.
So if this amendment passes, and then the motion as amended passes, the way I would interpret that is that you would have an additional up to a minute that would include a preamble, and then to be able to propose an amendment that would not count as part of the previous five minutes. That's the way that I would interpret that.
On the, on the main motion?
If you've already spoken, exactly, on the main motion.
What if we're on an amendment? Do you know what's happening? Because I don't.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing here that specifies, there's nothing here that specifies...
Yeah.
When that would count, so I would assume that that would, that would be in place at any time.
Okay, so I suggest at a minimum, we say, allowed one additional minute. That would be, I don't, I don't see how to get around it.
So again, I'm going to give you the same answer that I gave to Counselor Stroud and Counselor Neal.
That's fair.
To deal with the one minute, and then throw in other words, we can do that.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, your worship, and I recognize you.
This debate from the last five to 10 minutes illustrates perfectly the dangers of dabbling with our procedural bylaw unless it is very clear, very focused, and very well thought out and discussed at a committee beforehand, and then brought to council so that everybody knows what's going on. This sort of thing, we can debate this all night. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against this, because I think we are opening up an enormous Pandora's Box of all sorts of procedural ideas and theories and hypotheses that will keep us here for quite a while. I don't think that this is the place on the council floor to be dealing with this, so I'm going to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and I return the chair.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment, to amendment only? Okay, we'll call the question. Please vote. Still two people still to vote. And that carries by a vote of eight to five. So now we are speaking to the motion as amended, so now with the one minute to propose an amendment. Currently, I have Counselor Neal, Deputy Mayor Bohm has spoken, Counselor George, you still have the floor if there's anything else that you would like to say? No? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Is this, I assume, the time I can return to my original amendment?
So you have five minutes to speak to the motion as amended. Within that five minutes, if you wish to propose an amendment, you are free to do so.
Okay, well, I've already said it, so I can say it quickly, save some time. I'm going to add at the end of clause two, an amendment, quotes, "Unless the member has already used their full five minutes to the original motion."
So do you have that amendment in writing? Is there a seconder? Counselor Shell has seconded the amendment. Okay, on the amendment only. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. So I guess it is a question for the chair. I'm curious, but I understand, I sort of prefer this option, I like this option, but I'm concerned about you, the chair, dedicating a lot of time to being a timekeeper, and is that a concern, is my question?
So I would suggest that I'm, I already do spend a lot of time keeping track of everyone's time, so the only, the only complication would be that I would then have to mark down what the end time was. So if someone spoke for four minutes and 25 seconds, then I would need to mark that down and then keep track of that on the off chance that somebody would propose an amendment and know that they would only then have 35 seconds left to do that. So that could become incredibly complicated. That being said, this is, it's the will of council, how they wish to proceed. Counselor Holland.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm also curious, this is a question perhaps for the clerk, is there technology that can better help us with this type of situation so that the public and members of council are aware of, of time?
Mr. Clerk, sure your answer is yes. Counselor Holland, you still have the floor? Oh, you're done? Okay, next, Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I didn't raise it as a point of order, but it feels to me that this amendment is contrary to the original motion, which was to actually allow an opportunity for presenting, and I supported the one-minute rule to allow the, to speed up the process and allow the amender an opportunity to, to present an amendment if, if one was seen as fitting by whatever counselor, but to then say, to go back and say that you as timekeeper should determine how much time less than that minute we have, I think it gets administratively awkward. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this particular amendment.
Thank you, and yes, I, I didn't rule it out of order, because I don't believe that it's contrary to the motion per se, but certainly there's grounds to argue for or against it. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment only? Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. This whole discussion has been a prime example of why it took a long time to create a procedural bylaw, and it was with a committee. Currently, we don't have a committee, and I presume that's why we're, this is starting to appear, sounds like we need one. I will not be supporting the amendment, basically because I feel we're going to need to form a proper committee to handle all of these questions, not on the fly at a council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud, you can speak last.
Thank you. So the, there's a misperception raised by Counselor Neal about whether this is contrary to the motion. It's actually not. It is very specific. The only time you wouldn't be allowed an extra minute would be if you'd already used your full five minutes. If you had used anything less... If you had used anything less, as in four minutes, 59 seconds or less, of your speaking time, you would be allowed to access that bonus minute. And this would be an incentive to not run the full five minutes, as a matter of course, but only if you know that you need to go right to the hilt with your five minutes. You'll understand that you'll lose your bonus minute for amendments. So this would actually act as an incentive to shorten debate, and that's why I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the question on the amendment. That loses by a vote of four to nine. Counselor Stroud, you still have the floor for another four minutes if you have anything else that you wish to?
I will just use this time to say that I completely agree with Counselor Shell, that perhaps we do need a procedural bylaw committee to further... If we're going to be discussing other procedural bylaw amendments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I appreciate that Deputy Mayor Bohm has asked that the two clauses be separated. I have no problem supporting the first clause because that's what I do anyways, and so it's fine if we just want to formalize that. Your questions to staff do not count toward your five minutes. I do, however, have major concerns with the second clause. In my view, it's very important that at council that we are professional and prepared so that we come with our amendments in hand. That's why I'm sticky on having them ready in advance, in writing, submitted to the clerk. And when we do that and we come prepared, then five minutes is more than enough time to be able to change motions, to be able to put amendments forward, to speak to them. When you put an amendment forward, then the clock restarts, you've got lots of time to do that. The concern that I have with this motion is exactly what we have seen happen here tonight. And that is where we start to... Council sort of descends into this sort of working committee where we banter things back and forth. And to be honest, I think there are so many other things that we need to be doing with our council time that this is not the place to be able to put forward just top-of-mind eureka moments. If you have an eureka moment, you should have it before the meeting. And if you don't have it before the meeting, you can always reconsider the motion after. I think it's very dangerous to go down this route. It will make our meetings much longer and much messier. That being said, I get the sense that there is some appetite among council to explore these questions at a greater level, and I can appreciate that. So I'm going to put forward a motion to defer this motion to the Administrative Policies Committee for further analysis. What the Administrative Policies Committee does with it after that is entirely up to them, but I think that we've dealt with it long enough at council here tonight. It needs to go to a committee. So Deputy Mayor Bohm, so I put forward that motion and I'll...
Is there a seconder? Okay. And any discussion? Discussion can only be time or place.
Yes, I realize it's to time. So would that be to the next, the upcoming Administrative Policies Committee, which is happening this week? Yeah. Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Counselor Neal?
To time? Would it... I think the next, if I'm not wrong, Admin Services is either this week or next, so it might be... Makes sense to say with no later than May. And that way, dependent on how heavy an agenda they have, they could deal with this at their May meeting if necessary.
Okay, so the clerk has been so kind as to point out that the next Admin Policy meeting is actually April 9th, which would be too short, so we should actually extend it to May 14th, which would give sufficient time for that. So is that acceptable? Okay. And with that, we'll call the vote. And that passes with a vote of 13 to 0. And with that, I'll return the chair to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to deferred motion number two. Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Neal, that a bylaw be presented to council to amend bylaw 2010-1 as amended, the council procedural bylaw, by deleting Section 14.37 in its entirety and inserting the following: Appeal of the ruling of the chair. 14.37, any member may challenge the ruling of the chair. The challenger is permitted one minute to describe the reason, followed by a one-minute response by the chair if required. No further debate is permitted. A simple majority of the members present voting in favor of the challenge is required to overturn the decision of the chair. Counselor Ossanik?
Well, Your Worship, in the spirit of what you've just... What just happened with the first motion, if I can, can I move to defer that also to the admin policy and that will move tonight's meeting along? So I'll make that...
So Counselor Ossanik has put forward a motion to defer, seconded by Counselor George. Any discussion as to time or place? And that carries unanimously. Deferred motion number three, moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor George, whereas public consultation sessions increase levels of civic engagement and inform municipal program and policy design, and whereas bylaw 2010-1 defines public consultation meeting as "a meeting hosted by staff, committee, or council in order to receive input from the public regarding a specific matter; and whereas parents of young children require childcare in order to fully participate in such sessions; and whereas arranging childcare imposes costs on parent participants not faced by other residents who attend such sessions, therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to present options on potential onsite childcare provision for public consultation sessions that could be introduced, including guidelines, policy, and costs, for consideration to the Administrative Policies Committee by the end of Q2 2015." Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. And while there seems to be a hint of procedural stuff in here, I implore everybody to consider this as a policy that we should be considering, based on the fact that the public consultations that we host are meant to engage citizens for lots of reasons. It's not just a matter of hearing from people so that people feel like they're part of a process, although that is important. Their information informs policymaking and helps council and staff move in a certain direction that will address the concerns of the citizens that we represent. So the more people at these meetings, the better, obviously, from that perspective. And so thinking in terms of, you know, demographics and how we're planning and what our decisions today, what kind of impacts they might have, is what has led to this motion because we think in terms of a 20-year plan for the city. So therefore, these decisions that we're making about development affect the people, the children of today, without sounding too cliche. And so their parents are actually... Have a lot invested in the decisions that we make and should definitely therefore be a part of these meetings. Now, some people have raised the idea of engaging people in other ways, and as we had our strategic planning discussions, we talked a lot about open government and the role of technology in engagement, in the engagement process. And I do see that as being valuable, but there is something really significant about having people together in a room and having a live debate as we are doing this evening, where we see the potential challenges of a certain policy or a plan or a proposal, and we deal with them together. And through that process, we come to better policies. So there's the importance of engaging citizens, the importance of informed policymaking, which I would argue will make our jobs a lot easier in the long run when you have buy-in from... The more people involved in the process, the more likely those policies will be accepted and the programs will reflect essentially what the direction that we want to move forward in together. So that's the sort of the general idea behind this. And in terms of implementation, this is an issue that I've discussed with staff. And the reason that the motion is worded in this way, that we go and get some report back on costs and procedures, is really, you know, addresses the fact that I'm not an expert in caring for children as much as I would like to think I am. I'm not, as a counselor, looking to kind of put forward ways of providing childcare onsite. However, I do think that there is an opportunity to provide very low-cost, inclusive, onsite forms of childcare with minimal resources and minimal burden on existing staff. So that's, again, the rationale, and I ask that we support this in the spirit of engaging all demographics and addressing the needs of all members of society. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, just to carry on where Counselor... The Counselor was left off. We just want to make it very clear, too, that this is not pertaining to the current committees of council that we have. These are for meetings such as of a very important issue that may come about in your district, and you want to be able to get as many people out as you possibly can. So this is not something that we're looking at for any existing committees that currently exist out there. So we don't want people to get the wrong impression that if they apply for a committee, they're given that opportunity to serve, that there's automatic childcare being provided for them while they serve on the committee. That's not the case. So just a little further to some of the concerns that have been expressed to us just recently. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal?
Yes, I applaud this motion from the mover and the seconder. I think it's a sensible, very sensible first step. And I guess, public consultation meeting, I'm just looking for a little bit of guidance. Would the intent be then, any public meeting be... And often, they come before a... One of the umbrella committees. We have a half-hour public meeting to seek input from the community. That would be the kind of consultation meeting that is in mind for this? And I'm not trying to second-guess what Admin Policy says, but... And the seconder, Counselor George, brought up an interesting point. We all are allowed to have a town hall meeting on a yearly basis. When we do that, would the intent be that we could accommodate childcare for those particular meetings as well? So would those be the only two meetings that potentially would be considered, types of meetings?
So can I ask the question to staff? How staff would interpret public consultation session? See how you want it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is a definition of public consultation in the procedural bylaw. So that would be the first place we would go. The second one is that in the information report to bring back, we would actually define what it was to the committee so that we had a proper scope around it, it was properly understood, put into proper policy for practical implementation purposes, and get the consideration from the Administrative Policy Committee and answer the questions at that time as it relates to the report.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Almost totally, although I guess it's up to Admin Policies to answer that question in full when it goes to them. Thank you.
Counselor Turner?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. I have a question regarding this is... I know it's an information report, but I think we've got to look at some things. I don't want you to answer them today, but maybe in your report, you can address them. One would be the liability of the childcare. Would that come under the city? And how would we monitor and regulate this? And the cost of the taxpayers, to add this on. Thanks.
So is it fair to say that those would be contained in any staff report that would come back?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay. Counselor Ossanik?
Thank you, Your Worship. And just one further idea, as high school students, they need their volunteer hours. And I don't know for the liability if it's possible to use high school students when we do have some public meetings to provide the care. It would definitely be low cost because it would be no cost, but maybe liability wouldn't work out. I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you, Counselor Holland, for this motion. I think it's a great idea, and I will be supporting it. And when it comes to administrative policies, I look forward to helping answer all these questions and hearing from the public on them as well because that would be part of the process. And ironically, some of the members of the public that might want to speak to this at that time might have childcare issues. So we will be reminded of that irony and what it would mean to the process if we see that there are no parents of young children that come to speak publicly at that particular time. It would be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bohm, will you take the chair?
Yes, Your Worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. You're going to find that I'm probably going to do this on a regular basis over the next four years, and that's going to be bringing council back to the strategic plan that we have now tentatively adopted as council. And certainly, we have one of our new strategic priorities that talks about fostering open government, about accessibility to government in many different forms. And so I think that this motion certainly aligns with that, and so I'm happy to support it. My only word of caution is, and I suppose this is a word of caution more to the Administrative Policies Committee when this report comes back, is that there might be consideration by the committee to consider it in a larger context, to allow staff to bring a number of options that speak to a number of different ways that we can foster that open government where we can improve citizen access to our meetings and to city business. There might be a number of other trade-offs and technologies and other things that are in play, all with different advantages and disadvantages and pros and cons, but it might be premature to make a decision, a final decision on this, one way or the other, without that fuller context and understanding in a broader sense, what's the overall strategy. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I'm happy to support this tonight because we're just asking staff to go and to gather information, which I think aligns with what we would want them to do anyways in terms of our strategic plan. But I am going to ask just that committee members keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I return the chair to you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has not spoken? Counselor Hutchinson?
Just want to say that when I read this motion, I couldn't believe we hadn't done it before this in the 21st century, when it's clearly demonstrated what benefit there is to childcare for... Of childcare to employment prospects and never mind attending meetings. And so... And I would say that we have quite a bit of... I just want to add for grist to the mill here is that my work, we do something very similar to this. We supply daycare, childcare for general meetings, much like this. And we also pay an amount to offset the cost. We don't pay for it, but we offset the cost. And we pay the young people that do it for us, or our children, or teenagers, of members. So there's lots of different possibilities, I think. And I think it's good that we're looking at this and for all the good reasons that the mayor gave there about accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland, you can speak last.
Thank you, Your Worship. So to just address some of the questions that were raised, the definition of public consultation, it was... Public consultation meeting, it was intentional that we chose that and that it is in quotations because in the procedural bylaw, there are several definitions, distinctions made between public meeting, public consultation meeting, and town hall meeting. And while I would love to see this be an option for every meeting, I recognize that we have meetings every day of the year, and that seems a daunting task. So I certainly support your comments on this being...
So I certainly support your comments on this being part of a larger process as a way of expanding participation without necessarily expanding a program that offers childcare. There might be other ways people might choose to get involved. However, I do see the, the significance of this gesture in terms of inviting people who have never participated before in the democratic process to do that for the first time, perhaps. I think that might change things dramatically, and it might change things in a way that's very different from how people engage online. So I do see the value of having the onsite component of this. And just one other question that was raised, or sorry, one other thing to consider, is that, I guess, along the lines of what Counselor Hutchison has raised, I've done a bit of research on this, and there is no municipality in the province that provides this type of program. So I think in terms of our strategic planning objectives of putting forward this new way of doing governing, this would be a really important step and something that we could perhaps use to showcase our, our new motto, or our new, whatever we're going to call it, about Kingston as a, as a livable 21st century city. As it really, the livable component of, of what we're talking about in strategic planning has a lot to do with being open to new people coming to Kingston, young families in particular. So I think this goes a long way to kind of promoting us as, as a good place to live. So thank you for your comments.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries unanimously. Next to us for Report Number 33 from the Chief Administrative Officer.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Cannon. That Report Number 33 from the Chief Administration of Officer Consent, received and adopted.
There are clauses A through F. Would anyone like any of them separated? Counselor Neal.
B, please.
B has been separated. Seeing no other separations, Counselor Hutchison.
D and E.
D and E. Counselor Allen.
In Report Number C, somebody has to be nominated to fill that spot.
Right, so we will have to separate that. Thank you. Okay, so first I'll call the question on Clause A and F. A is road renaming Douglas Avenue, southern portion to Newton Place. F is a word of tender sewer water main and road reconstruction Young Street as well as Forsyth Avenue. And that carries. Next is Item B, options for the application of Brownfield CIP benefits to the federal Kingston dry dock property. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I, I always support Brownfield revitalization, and, and I support our policy for Brownfield revitalization. I'm just seeking a little bit of clarity on this particular proposal, because frankly, the reason we're in the situation the community is that we are, is because the federal government has been neglectful for 25 or 30 years in not being good stewards for that particular property. My concern, and if this is declaring that as a zone that will allow future development to go through the planning process and that particular footprint to be revitalized, I'm totally in support of that. My concern is that the federal government wouldn't put in a proposal that would end up with city taxpayers footing the bill for something that the, that the federal government should have been doing all along. So I really want to support this, but I, I'm looking for some reassurance. As I read this motion, and I'll ask the Commissioner to comment, there, we would potentially give up to $40,000 from working fund reserve that may go to the federal government so they can do a reassessment? Or is that only for a potential, for a private, or the next purchaser of that property?
Commissioner Beach.
So in terms of the budget that's being allocated with the recommendation of staff, that's to prepare the application, do the public education that we need to do, and do all that process, make an application fee potentially as well, and do research that we need to just for that application. So in order to make this a project area within the Community Improvement Plan, we have to make an application through a process that's similar to an official plan amendment. So the $40,000 will be with city staff. It will be to do work to prepare that application, research and materials that would go into that application, so it would not go to a developer, it would not go to Public Works or any other of the potential owners.
Thank you. That's reassuring. I didn't want to be rewarding inappropriate behavior by the federal government, and so I find that reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Counselor Neal's comments, Commissioner Beach, can you clarify the context of this Brownfield application that, that first of all, that we're not looking to bail out the federal government per se, but that it would be something that we could put on the table to work with a potential developer to provide an incentive to keep the Marine Museum on the property?
So under provincial legislation, the cities permitted to identify a public good under a Community Improvement Plan, and what we're proposing is that we look at the Marine Museum itself, as well as waterfront access, a deep-sea dock, or preservation of heritage as being a public good on that site. So in return for a developer or future owner of that site to undertake work that would keep the Marine Museum there, that would preserve the heritage structures, that would provide public waterfront access, we are proposing that we do a project area that in return, they could get a rebate through taxes on some of the remediation costs. So we have to make an application for that. It has to go through a process like the Official Plan Amendment. And then after that, a, an owner has to actually make an application through that, that project, and has to be accepted by council. So this is just a first step, would have to be followed up by an application, and then council would have the final approval of that application as well.
Thank you. I think that that's a critical point that we need to make here, is that we're attaching strings to this. The council is doing its part to say that we will try to make the redevelopment of this property with the Marine Museum on the site as financially viable as possible. And I think that that's critical. It's showing that as a city, that we are behind the Marine Museum, and that we are willing to put some of our financial capital behind this to make this work. At the end of the day, we need still the federal government to partner with us, and we need a developer that has the imagination to be able to make the site work. But I think that this is an important first step for council, so I would certainly encourage everyone to support it. Thank you. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with your, your previous comments. I have a question from staff myself. So the, the, the project area would require council approval from any future developer, but, and am I correct as well, there would be the usual zoning controls that we have as well through Planning Committee?
Commissioner Beach.
The approval process for any application to come forward to redevelop the site would still have to follow the normal process through zoning or official plan changes that would have to take place. The current uses on the site are institutional, so likely to do any development on the site, there would have to be some planning applications that would come through.
So my understanding of this file, with this piece added to it, would be not only what the mayor just said about the importance of showing that we're doing everything that we can to make it attractive to a possible new owner, but there are certain requirements from the federal government's side as well. That's the control that we maintain in the process, and the other control that we maintain in the process is through the regular planning process. So as far as the fears in my constituency and in Kingston in general regarding this uncertain fate of the museum because of not having taken ownership of the site outright by becoming the new owner ourselves, I would say that there's, there's several ways that we can continue to advocate for positive outcome, and for that reason, I will happily support this.
Thank you. So seeing no other comments or questions, we'll call the vote. And that carries. Item C, council appointee to submission jury for leading change, a community defined by transitional leadership, part of the City of Kingston's 2015 Sir Johnny bicentennial commemorations. So we need a volunteer from council to, to join the submission jury. Do I have a volunteer? I see Counselor Holland. Is there anybody else that wishes to volunteer? We can, we can have a vote. No? I think that Counselor Holland has been acclaimed. Mr., Mr. Clerk, do we need to, do we need a separate vote to, to note that, or can we just pass this with her? Okay. So we will, I will call the vote on Item C with that Counselor Holland be appointed to the submission jury. And that carries. Item D, a word of contract, one one-ton extended cab, four-by-four cab and chassis truck. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. Normally, I let these go by, but I am concerned that year after year, we have these in, and we have a one-liner about the green fleet policy, which we enacted a few years back with some small fanfare. And there states here, there are currently no published submission figures available for commercial vehicles because there are too many variables in load and application. I can understand that to some extent, but I'm wondering, since we get these, we have a problem as a society, as a community, that we, in Kingston particularly, we did not make our greenhouse emissions targets, as reported in our climate action report. So.
So Counselor Hutchison, I'm just, I'm just wary of where you might be going with this. If your concern is with the policies that we have in place, that's something that we can entertain.
I'm concerned about the application, which I'll get to in a second.
Okay, I'll let you continue.
Yeah. So what I'm, what I would like to say to this is, I don't expect you to vote against this tonight, obviously, for, because it's not part of it. But I do want to bring up, for the purposes of council and the public and for staff, is if the criteria, we could set our own criteria about what we felt were the variables of load and application, especially about load, since it tells you the size of the truck, you know what the safe load is, or you can calculate it. And we should work from there, try to meet the other criteria of the green fleet policy. And we need to make every move we can to be able to try and follow that policy as it is applied in these motions. So I don't have to say anything about the next motion. I've said everything I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other comments, Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just very quickly, I'm just wondering, because we, we see these come before us quite often, and, and the only reason they're doing that is because they can't get three, three responses to the tender that goes out. And I'm wondering if, if this is going to continue to be an ongoing issue. It just seems that we're dealing with, we're getting too far into the kitchen with these types of things, and I'm just wondering if, for future consideration, staff might want to look at what we could do, whether we actually need to see it. I mean, we, we allocate the funding of budget time to allow staff to go out, make the purchase necessary to run the departments and such, and the only reason we're seeing this is because we didn't get three, three responses. And I'm just, if, you know, if it's going to be an ongoing thing.
CAO Hunt?
What they might suggest.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps Ms. Kidd would like to add, she is also responsible for fleet administration. One of the things that we're, we will be trying to do is to bundle more of these RFPs or tender requests in the future to see whether or not we can get more bidders. Quite frankly, there just isn't the appetite for bidders for one vehicle, and they seem to not want to put those bids in. With respect to your point about whether or not we should continue to see these, we, we always want to follow the purchasing bylaw. The purchasing bylaw does have strict regulations when it comes to reporting. I, for one, would not want to see that changed as a one-off. I think that it, while it does take a bit of time to review, prepare the reports, it's still necessary information for the public to understand that while there is only one bidder in a, in a few cases, or less than three bidders in a few cases, we are still trying to administer the public purchasing practices the best, the best way possible with openness and transparency. So appreciate the counselor's comment, but that would be my advice as the chief administrative officer. Ms. Kidd might, might wish to add more detail with respect to the actual numbers that we're seeing on some of these tenders.
Ms. Kidd?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So further to CAO Hunt's comments, where we can bundle? So if we had, usually it would be in, in a passenger vehicle category if we were, if we were looking to purchase in any calendar year, maybe four or five passenger vehicles. We do try to bundle those together so we can generate more interest in them. But when you're looking at vehicle purchases like this, which are a little bit more unique, like crew cabs, cabin chassis, this is, this isn't like a full truck. One of these reports is just the bid, and we'll use a box off an existing piece of equipment and put it on. So it gets a little trickier. You don't usually have more than, those are usually like a one-off in a calendar year. I have taken a look at, at the reports that we've brought forward over the last three years, and most of the time that we bring a report forward, it is because we don't have at least three bids that meet the specifications, and I don't really have a reason for that specifically. There's not, there's not a lot of markup when, when you're doing RFPs on, on passenger vehicles. So we, we cannot award locally, because we're, we're not allowed to do that. So, you know, a lot of the companies, they're just not interested in going through the process of, of registering on the website where RFPs are posted. Our RFPs are not unlike other municipalities. I wondered if, if, because we have a 17-page RFP document, if that was throwing people off. I'm seeing the same types of, of language in other, other communities, so I don't think it's that. I just think that it's pretty competitive. There's not a lot of guarantee, and we just don't seem to be able to generate the interest. But, but for other times, it's because specifically, they're unique vehicles, and there may not be more than one player, so if we get into some specialized equipment and things like that. As far as the purchasing policy, again, we do have to have three bids, and fleet purchases can, you know, there is some room for, for at least a perception that there may not be a level playing field. So I think it's extremely important that we continue to bring these forward to council and follow the purchasing bylaw as it's laid out.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Item E, a word of contract, one three-quarter ton cargo van with a raised roof. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report Number 34 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Allen. That Report Number 34 from the Chief Administration of Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So we have a couple of different items, but we will begin with a briefing from Mr. Keach. Keach, president and CEO, Utilities Kingston, on item 1B, drinking water quality management system and operational plans, and number two, I believe, receipt of the 2014 Water System annual compliance reports. Mister Keach.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to take a minute and briefly provide council with a little bit more detail on the two reports before you this evening that deal with your drinking water supply in the city of Kingston. The two reports, the first one looks at the quality management system that we have in place and the operation plan that supports that. And the second one is receipt of the 2014 Water System Annual Compliance Reports. For those members of council who have been here before, the second report is something that we bring forward to council on a yearly basis. We need to do that to get your endorsement before we submit that to the ministry for final approval. The first report that deals with the quality management system is here before council tonight. It's not something that we normally bring on a yearly basis. It's something that did come before council back in, I believe it was 2009, when the City of Kingston Utilities Kingston first achieved approval for the quality management system and the accreditation that we submitted to the ministry at that point in time. And with both reports, I'm just going to talk a little bit about kind of what they're about. I'm not going to get into the detail of what's in them, because I think if councils looked at them, there's probably about 150 pages of detail there. And if there are any specific questions, we will attempt to answer them or get information afterwards. But I think it's important that council realizes sort of why they're here and sort of what's behind these. So as far as the drinking water quality management system, it is a management system that we are required, now that we, the City of Kingston as the owner, Utilities Kingston as the operator, are required as a result of the Safe Drinking Water Act. That's legislation that the province of Ontario has in place that's now under the purview of the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. And this did come about as a result of the events that happened in Walkerton back probably 13, 14 years ago at this point in time. So the different components of the drinking water quality management system, there is a operations plan, which forms part of the quality management system, that we are required to write, draft and bring forward to council for approval. As I said, that did come forward to council back in 2009, and as a result of one of the other components of the DWQMS, which is yearly audits by senior management, of which the details are included for this year, and every three years, a review by an independent auditor. The feeling was that, you know, it's been a number of years since council saw the plan that we should bring it forward to council for endorsement again, just as a best practice. So basically, that's why it is here this evening. Some of the other components of the drinking water quality management system are a financial plan. A financial plan has been prepared, was presented to the last council. It forms part of the 10-year plans that you saw at budget time. That was also submitted to the ministry for approval and a permit to take water. So as I said, just components of what is required by the city as the owner and Utilities Kingston as the credit operator of the two systems that you have responsibility for. And the two systems, the one is the Cana system that is located out near Kingston Mills. It's a co-op system. It's a well of about 40 customers. And the other one, for the urban area of the City of Kingston, it's supplied by two water treatment plants, the one on King Street near Queen's University, and the other at Point Pleasant out off Sunny Acres Road. And it has about 35,000 to 40,000 customers. So again, the plan is here before council tonight for approval. And if there are any questions, we will answer them. When I say we, myself and Kevin Riley, who is here this evening, Kevin is responsible for the preparation of the reports that you see before us. He is designated by the ministry as the overall operator in charge or with responsibility for the systems. He has about 65 licensed operators that work either in the plants or in the distribution system for the water and the wastewater. And that's in addition to the engineers and the technical staff that we have here. So the point that I'm trying to make here, we have a very well-trained, well-educated and certified staff that looks after these for you. The second report, and again, this is something that you see on a yearly basis, looks at the annual compliance reports that we, now the we as Utilities Kingston, are required to put together and submit to the ministry, and we need to bring them forward to council for their receipt before we do this. One of the things that I wanted to point out to council is the items of basically of non-compliance that we had in the system. So when we're dealing with these reports, we look at the three treatment facilities. So the King Street facility, the Point Pleasant facility that is out in the former Kingston township, and the Cana system. At the King Street, there were a total of six issues, six items of non-compliance. All of them were a result of lab air. They are detailed in the report. Basically, there were samples that were taken, probably got contaminated either by staff or in the labs. The second sample proved that there were no items of concern. In the Cana system, we did have a system issue back in May of last year where we lost pressure on the system. We issued a boil water advisory, took a number of samples. The samples came back fine, and then we lifted the boil water advisory. The, I guess the one other point that I want to make is that we are very confident, extremely confident about the supply of water that we have, both for the Kingston system and the Cana system. No areas of concern. I think the reports we get from the inspections by the ministry show that, and the reports that are before council tonight as well show it. The other thing that we have included in the second report is the reports that we do for the wastewater systems. As I said, for the water system, we are required to prepare them and bring them to council for approval. For the wastewater systems, we just prepare them and submit them to the ministry. But for council's information, as we are at Utilities Kingston managing these on your behalf, I think it's important that you realize that the work that goes into the systems of what we're doing, so they are before council just for your information. So as I said, I didn't want to get into the detail of it, but this can be confusing. A fair amount of information that is provided, you know, a lot of detail. And if there's any questions, myself or Mister Riley would be more than pleased to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor O'Sanick.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for the presentation, Mister Keach. I just have a question about the wastewater treatment plants and the bypass events. And it's just for my own clarification. So for the Katerakwe Bay wastewater treatment plant, there were two secondary bypass events, and they're listed in detail on page 271, and they're due to rainfall. And we've seen that before over the years. It's unfortunate, but we can't predict the rainfall events that will happen. Sometimes it's just over capacity. For Ravensview, the executive summary says also that there were two events, but then table five on page 311, it has like many, many rows on the table. So is it because it's only a secondary bypass event if it crosses a certain threshold in the volume? Or why is the executive summary saying only two bypass events, but the table has like multiple dates showing different, you know, volumes that were in the overflows?
Mister Riley?
Through you, your worship. That table indicates bypasses from other facilities within our collection system, CSO tanks, sewage pumping stations. So they're not all from Ravensview, they're from a variety of different facilities. We operate about 53 different facilities on the city's behalf, which include sewage or wastewater pumping stations, which have in some cases, facility for bypass as well.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And it looks like, like I remember seeing this last year, the Palace Road Pumping Station and the King George CSO, the volumes are unknown there because there's no monitoring equipment. So do we have something like in the forecast down the road where we could start to monitor the volumes, just so we can have like comparisons year by year if the affluents going into the rivers or to Lake Ontario at that point are going up or going down?
Again, through your worship, yes, we have plans to install, actually at O'Kell Pumping Station or King George CSO Tank, the flow meters are reinstalled for bypassing. And Palace Road's a little bit more difficult because of the design of the station, but that's something we're endeavoring to install as well as best we can. We're still working on the design for that.
Thanks very much.
If I could add to Mister Riley's last comment, one of the things that we look at when we upgrade these stations is metering. If you go back many years ago, the bypasses just happened, there was no types of metering. But that is one thing that we take into account whenever there is an upgrade.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. Just with respect to page 49, it's got a chart of drinking water quality. And I noticed that the Kingston water drinking, the quality of Point Pleasant is 100% for all these three years, but the one for the King Street Water Treatment Plant goes up and down. And I was wondering, what's wrong with the King Street one?
Again, through your worship, are you referring to the scoring from the Ministry of Environment?
Sorry, the first. Sorry, the first report on page nine out of 22, or 49 in the package?
Those are inspection ratings from the Ministry of Environment based on our MOE inspections. Some of the inspections identify administrative type of issues that we have to correct, which can affect the scoring. Point Pleasant, we didn't have as many administrative issues as we did with King Street. And sometimes the percentages vary depending on the inspection reports. Not sure if that answers your question.
So it's an inspection report issue, not a treatment water treatment?
No, it's via the inspection reports by the ministry inspectors.
If I could add to it, as I said at the start, there are no concerns about the quality of the water. If there are concerns about the quality of the water, or we need boil water advisories, they will be detailed in the report. These are generally administrative items. And I think in fairness for people that don't have this in front of them, the ratings for the one plant is 100%. And the comment about the ratings for the other plant where there may be problems, they're all well above 99%. So all these are above industry averages. So I don't think there is any concern that the plant is not being operated or not operating up to performance levels. There's no need for concern. These are administrative items. Generally speaking, when there are inspections, there are little things that come back, minor things for improvement, but nothing that would impact the quality of the water.
Thank you. And the second question on page 13 out of 22, with regards to water losses. And just looking at these numbers, it looks like we're, we saved 3,200 cubic meters per day as a result of being able to find them. But I'm just, I just want to double check. We've gone down by 1.55% in the amount of lost water? And judging by these numbers, it looks like we're losing 91,974 square meters a day? That seems exceedingly excessive. Is that correct?
So the response to have we made some improvements? Yes. Are we losing a significant amount of water? Yes, we still are, I think. And I just, I didn't go to the page that you mentioned. It's 30%, maybe up to 40% in some areas. That is not unusual for water systems, in particular for old systems. We have programs in place that we continue to work on to try and track this down. Leak repair of water mains, also looking at where water's not metered, whatnot. And it's something that we continue to work on. But you are correct, there's a significant amount of water that we take in from the lake that gets lost before it gets delivered to customers' residence.
Thank you. And the last point is on page 17, there was an incident with iron precipitates in the water. And it mentioned that this does not pose any health concerns. Is that because it's so far away from any health concerns? Or because iron doesn't, isn't a health concern?
So there was a sample taken, the results came back that way. There were subsequent samples taken that the results were fine. So our view is it was probably an error in the first sample that was taken. If the other samples had come back, then there would have been more concern, but they came back fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, so first clause is 1B, drinking water quality management system and operational plans. And that carries. Item two, receipt of the 2014 Water System Annual Compliance Reports. Please vote. And that carries. Report number 35 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to present report number 35 in the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee for consideration by council.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor O'Sanick, that report number 35 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are two clauses. Would anyone like them separated? Seeing none, we'll call the question on both. Item one is the Museums and Collections Advisory Committee Report Card, and item two is request for briefings related to housing and homelessness issues. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number 36 on the Addits from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I would like to present report number 36 from the Planning Committee and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor George, that report number 36 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
There are two clauses. Would anyone like them separated? So we'll vote on them as a whole. Item one is an application for zoning bylaw amendment 221 Concession Street. And item two is an application for zoning bylaw amendment 36 Cliff Crescent. And that carries. There's nothing from committee of the whole, no information reports or information reports from members of council, no miscellaneous business. There are two new motions, one in the agenda and one on the Addits. So I will turn them over to, turn the chair over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship, and I recognize you, or whoops, thank you, your worship, and I accept the chair. So new motion one, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Neil. Whereas the City of Kingston and communities across the country have been encouraged to participate into the Mayor's Poetry City Challenge issued by Mayor Nahid Nesi, City of Calgary. And whereas the Mayor's Poetry City Challenge is a celebration of poetry, writing and publishing, and whereas participating in this challenge will identify Kingston as a community that values and supports the contributions of the arts, particularly poets and writers, to our quality of life. And whereas National Poetry Month is celebrated in Canada and the United States for the month of April, therefore be it resolved that notwithstanding the proclamation policy, the month of April be declared National Poetry Month in the City of Kingston and the City of Kingston poet laureate Helen Humphries be invited to present a poem at the April 21st meeting of council in recognition of National Poetry Month.
Any discussion to the motion? Councillor Neil?
Just very quickly, I applaud this action by the mayor. I think this is a noble pursuit. Our very first poet laureate was the last term of council, and we've, having Helen Humphries as the next poet laureate, I think is no coup. She's world-renowned, but definitely foremost in Canada. And I just wanted to put in a quick pitch that on April 13th, I believe, in the Wilson Room, there will be Eric Folsom, our outgoing poet laureate, Helen Humphries, our incoming poet laureate, and I believe also the poet from, poet laureate from Edmonton will be here as well. So anybody in the public who wishes to attend, that's a free event at the Wilson Room at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Neil. And any further discussion? And with that, we'll call the vote. And with that, we'll call the vote? And that passes 13 to zero. And under new motions against, the consent of council is requested for the addition of new motion two. So we'll have to, oh, we don't need to vote for that? Okay, so moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Stroud, that the following motion approved by council on February 17th, 2015 be reconsidered. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Cannon.
Whereas section 9.1 of bylaw number 2010-1, council procedural bylaw as amended, states that meetings of council are held at city hall and the council chambers at 216 Ontario Street unless otherwise decided by resolution of council. And whereas it is desirable to hold the council strategic planning sessions at a more suitable and functional off-site location, therefore be it resolved that council waive bylaw number 2010-1 as amended in order to hold the council strategic planning sessions on Monday, March 30th, Tuesday, March 31st, and Monday, April 20th, 2015, commencing at 6:00 PM in room 312 Goods Hall, Queen's. And please note a two-thirds vote of council is required for this. And any discussion? Mayor Patterson?
So thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll use my time to provide the rationale for the reconsideration. Both councillor Stroud and myself will have difficulty getting to the session on April 20th at 6:00 PM. So with the consent, the vote of council to reconsider this, my intention is to put forward an amendment to change the start time for April 20th to 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, the amendment has been to change the start time to 7:00 PM. Any discussion on the amendment?
Point of order.
Oh.
So I think we need to take the vote on the reconsideration first.
Oh, correct. Okay, so any discussion on the reconsideration? And with that, we'll call the vote? And that passes with a vote of 13. And Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I have a motion to amend, moved by myself if there is a seconder, that the wording be changed from on Monday, March 30th and Tuesday, March 31st, commencing at 6:00 PM, and Monday, April 20th, 2015, commencing at 7:00 PM. And just to show you that I hold myself to the same rules I have in writing for the clerk. I actually wrote it out for you guys.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Patterson. So any discussion on the amendment? Seconder for that? Okay, seconded by councillor Stroud. And you'd like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thanks, Mr. Mayor, for moving the amendment. It'll just allow me personally to get from Stewart Street out of my scrubs, if I have time, up to Goods Hall for this session starting at 7:00 because my ICU shift ends at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And with that, we'll call, sorry councillor, no, okay. And with that, we'll call the vote? And that passes. Oh, that passes. And then we'll now have to vote on the motion as amended? Any discussion on that? And we'll call the vote? And that passes. And I return the chair to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, so minutes, no tabling of documents, some communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor O'Shanock, that bylaws three and 10 through 13 be given their first and second reading?
Please vote?
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor O'Shanock, that bylaws four, five, and seven through 12 be given their third reading?
Please vote? And that carries. Motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Stroud. Please vote? Still two people left to vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.